Moves us on to the next regular item, which is item sixteen. And for the record, this was moved from consent. And it is the Experience Scottsdale Destination Marketing Services Agreement. I request adoption of resolution one zero eight nine five authorizing agreement two seven, twenty seventeen seventy-nine COS with Scottsdale Convention and Visitors Bureau, Inc., doing business as Experience Scottsdale for the use of the Tourism Development Fund for provisions of Destination Marketing Services. And we have Ms. Karen Churchward here, our Tourism and Events Director, for presentation on that. Ms. Churchward, welcome.
Welcome. Thank you, Mayor, Council. Review the Destination Marketing Services Agreement with Experience Scottsdale. The city's Destination Marketing Services Program of Work has been provided by Experience Scottsdale since nineteen seventy-seven.
Let me go, Jane.
And program funding is based on Proposition Two Hundred, which says that fifty percent of the total annual bed tax collection shall be used toward destination marketing. The timeline we are proposing is of new five-year Destination Marketing Services Agreement with Experience Scottsdale. With, the agreement also could be extended five years if subject to the City Council's approval. The existing contract terms that would continue are quarterly, the Experience Scottsdale would provide performance measure reports, programming updates, and financial reports. Annually, they will have an audit done by, through their company, and provide financial and performance reports. And also want to note that annually, funding and marketing activities are, require the City Council's approval. New contract terms that are based primarily on the two thousand and sixteen city audit is our assist the city in efforts to promote city-owned venues in downtown Scottsdale, provide no-cost advertisements in the Experience Scottsdale-produced guidelines, equally share in the payment of the Fiesta Bowl agreement, enhance transparency for procurement, travel, and compensation policies, and provide the RSA Form nine nine, nine ninety, and to keep non-program costs within a competitive range, which would be based on similar destination marketing organizations' budgets. Additionally, the city auditor will conduct an audit in the fifth year. The financial terms of the agreement, again, the actual budget forecasted bed tax revenue is in the amount of nineteen point four million dollars, a little over that, and fifty percent of that is, by voter approval, goes towards their contract-based funding, which would be about nine point seven million dollars. As I mentioned, the Fiesta Bowl agreement is now fifty percent paid by us and fifty percent by Experience Scottsdale. And then there would be, will be a true-up of the fiscal year sixteen seventeen payment and, and a payment of one hundred and eighteen thousand, four hundred and seventy-five. So a total of ten million dollars would be paid if this is approved. And with that, I'll thank you for the opportunity to give you an overview, and any questions?
We will go to the council for some questions, but first, we're gonna, we have some requests to speak by the public. So you can either take a seat and come back, or stand by, whichever you'd like, Sandra. I'm sorry, Karen. But next, first to speak then would be Sandra Schenkett, followed by Bob Pejman.
Good evening, Mayor Lane, Vice Mayor Clapp, and council members. I'm Sandy Schenkett. I live at one zero nine six one East Gary Road, eight five two five nine. Howard Myers asked me to make a statement for him. He's a city activist and the founder of Protect Our Preserve. He would like to have you think about this. My frustration with Experience Scottsdale is what they have on their website as a result of their rebranding. They are trying to appeal to a younger generation that doesn't spend money in our city. If you watch the video on their site, they show Hummer ripping through the desert, bonfires, parties in the desert, and other activities which cannot currently be done in the preserve. As implied in their ads, I believe Experience Scottsdale rebranded Scottsdale to attract the wrong demographics, which will eventually hurt our tourism businesses, especially in our downtown. The preserve is very hard to find on their website, much less the fact that it is not emphasized. So to me, they are way off track, but it may take a couple of years for their marketing results to become obvious. Howard's in Sedona tonight, so I'm relaying his sentiments. Last week, I sent emails to the Audit Committee regarding this item number sixteen, which was on consent agenda, and requested that Experience Scottsdale contract be revised. The total bed tax raised is almost twenty million dollars because of the five percent we tax each occupied hotel room guest. Fifty percent is almost ten million is hand, handed over to the nonprofit corporation, Experience Scottsdale. ES is tasked with destination marketing for Scottsdale. In addition to funding provided by bed tax, there are approximately four hundred ES paid members. However, one hundred and seventy of those members are not Scottsdale businesses. It appears that non-Scottsdale venues detract from our actual tourist destinations within Scottsdale. When retail destinations such as Carolyn Commons, Desert Ridge, Salt River Pima are marketed alongside Scottsdale businesses, the tourists supposedly attracted to Scottsdale are diverted from our city. When this happens, our own Scottsdale businesses suffer and no sales taxes collected to help support our city. Over sixty-six percent of the tax to Phoenix and other, over, excuse me, over sixty-six percent of ES marketing dollars come from Scottsdale bed tax. The diversion of the collectible sales tax to Phoenix and other Arizona attractions should be limited by you as council members in this contract. Since ES receives ten million from Scottsdale's heads and beds, certainly Scottsdale should receive the majority of the benefit of those marketing dollars.
Ms. Schenkett, your time's expired.
Okay.
If you could wrap it up quickly.
Thank you.
And next is Bob Pejman, followed by Mike Surgine.
Thank you, Mayor Lane, Vice Mayor Clapp, and members of council. My name is Bob Pejman. I'm the owner of Pejman Gallery. It's located at seventy-one thirty East Main Street. And I want to bring to your attention some facts, not my opinions, but just plain facts. Now, one of the major facts is that downtown has been in decline mode for the past three years. And I'm talking about sales revenue, and I'm talking about tax revenue. And no slide or chart illustrates this better than the following. Can anybody see that?
Not yet.
Okay. As you can see, there's a downward trajectory in, in the sales tax in downtown. Now, this graph doesn't show Fashion Square, but even if you add Fashion Square into this chart, Fashion Square was also down two percent last year. So the sales in downtown are slipping. Now, some of the council members will say, well, that's not news, because, hey, you know, brick and mortar is on the decline, online internet sales are doing this, and so forth. And that would be all correct, except that when you look at citywide, the trend is the opposite. It's going up. So this isn't a bad city to do business with, except downtown is a bad place to do business with. So as all of Scottsdale is growing, downtown is slipping, and that's the problem. Wouldn't you say so? That's a problem that needs to be addressed. And one of the reasons, I think the major reason, is that we have, we don't have abundance of qualified foot traffic, quantity and quality, in downtown. Now, I'm not here to ask you to try to figure out how to solve it, other than acknowledge that we need a robust marketing plan to promote Scottsdale, to promote downtown as a destination, not to promote it just to bring in residents to live there, but promote it as a destination, which basically feeds to my next set of facts, which has to do with the bed tax money. So here are some other facts. We collect twenty million dollars from hotels. Half of that is slated per Prop Two Hundred for destination marketing. We give all of that money to Experience Scottsdale to do a good job with that money. And what's their purpose? To promote Scottsdale as a destination, not to promote the resorts as a destination, but to promote Scottsdale as a destination. Of course, the resorts are the prime beneficiary, that people have to stay somewhere, and that's what they're gonna do. So the question to you is, if there is a destination marketing budget, isn't Scottsdale a major tourist destination? And I think most of you would agree that it is. And for that reason, there is language that's put into the new Experience Scottsdale contract to address that. But my problem is that the language is so thin that it doesn't really do much. I mean, the language is basically limited to Experience Scottsdale to work closely with downtown. I mean, what does that really mean? It's so loose. So can't we define it better? Can't council direct staff to, to put firmer language? And by the way, we're not looking for money, we're not looking for an allocation of funds, we're just looking for more concrete language. And I think it will serve all of us well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pejman. Next is Mike Surgine, and will be followed by Jack Miller.
Thank you, Mayor Lane, and members of the council. My name's Mike Surgine. I'm the vice chair of the Board of Directors of the Experience Scottsdale. And if I say Experience Scottsdale every time, I get five dollars, because I want to say SCVB. I'm the resident of Scottsdale, and I'm the managing director of Sanctuary Camelback Mountain. Last year, Experience Scottsdale launched a new destination brand and advertising campaign after eighteen months of research and development. During these months, Experience Scottsdale uncovered the best tactics to appeal to current and future travelers. In consumer testing, after viewing Experience Scottsdale's new ads, potential interest in visiting Scottsdale increased by twenty-five percent. The ads appealed to potential visitors, no matter their age, geography, or familiarity with Scottsdale. Throughout the past fiscal year, these ads have been placed in zip codes where our consumers live: New York, Chicago, San Francisco, Denver, Canada, and other locations. They were placed in high-end publications like afar, Golf Digest, and Bon Appetit. Experience Scottsdale's mission is to brand the entire region so that important, affluent visitors choose Scottsdale. No other organization is tasked with that responsibility, and no other organization promotes the entire region to not only leisure visitors, but to meeting and incentive planners. The past fiscal year, their efforts have resulted in more than five hundred future group bookings in Scottsdale-area hotels and resorts. Scottsdale was featured in more than one thousand articles and publications like Sunset and Washington Post. And Experience Scottsdale educated nearly four thousand travel agents and tour operators on how to best sell Scottsdale vacations. Many businesses, both large and small, in all parts of the city rely on Experience Scottsdale, because no other one business can generate as much national and international business as Scottsdale. Experience Scottsdale, formerly CVB, is the envy of other CVBs around the country. And the reason being, they excel in everything they need to excel in. Their ROI, return on investment, is one of the top in the country. Their, their research is beyond reproach. Their leading-edge marketing, some of the advertising campaigns that they did in New York City and Chicago, when there was four feet on the snow on, on the ground, was remarkable. I would also tell you that the, the Executive Committee, the Board of Directors, and the membership of Experience Scottsdale are not just hotels and resorts. It's hotel and resorts, it's restaurants, it's bars, it's the golf industry, and it's retail. And all of them are overwhelming in their praise of what Experience Scottsdale has done. I encourage you to please approve this five-year plan, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Surgine. Mr. Jack Miller, followed by Mr. French Thompson.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. My name is Jack Miller. I am the chairman of the Scottsdale, well, of the Experience Scottsdale, the Convention and Visitors Bureau. I will not get five dollars for that, Mike. I'm not sure we all understand, people don't just choose Scottsdale. I've been in the hotel business now for forty years. Of that forty years, I have served on over eighteen CVBs. I know, I'm old. The reality is, I have never been with a more efficient, highly talented group of people than the one I get to work with here. And, and let's just be clear, as nice as I am, hoteliers are bound and determined to have the best CVB they can. I've been in cities where it was the opposite, and we fought very hard to change that city's CVB. There's no call for that here. The hotels that generate those tax dollars by those customers walking through those doors, those hotels have owners. Those owners are bound and determined to put their dollars in cities where they can reap the benefits. But our city gets the benefit of a great CVB who causes more and more to come. Notice this, we've had four years of prosperity, but supply is growing across the United States right now. Austin, Texas is adding almost two thousand rooms. That is a major competitor to us. Other cities are doing the same. We must have a convention and visitors bureau that is seasoned like ours is, the leadership like we have. Know this, our game changer, and we all talk about game changers in the business, our game changer is the CVB, Experience Scottsdale. We sell experiences. That's why people come here. And the fact that we've been able to prosper, don't assume that that's an entitlement to the future. It is not. I look across this city, and it's an awesome city. And that ten million dollars that someone was speaking about, the other half of that goes to our city, to spend as they need to spend it. I ask, what other department in the city, what other third-party generates sixty-seven dollars in revenue for every dollar they spend? There's none. I don't have to ask. I knew the answer. But this one does. I think we should all quickly say, thank you. We appreciate you. You are awesome. That's what I say, and that's what the tourism community says. It is an absolute that this group of people do the job better than any I have ever seen. And the board holds them to task, but they've got great leadership. I'm looking for you to support them tonight, seven zero. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Next is Mr. French Thompson, followed by Mr. Mark Stewart.
Good evening, Mayor Lane and, and council members. My name is French Thompson. I'm the president of Scottsdale Gallery Association. I thought I was gonna come up here and be their cheerleader, but I've just been outshined by two cheerleaders even better than myself. So I'd say thank you, Experience Scottsdale. You've done a phenomenal job. I've been a member of it for over twenty years, so I, I know that I've reaped some of the benefits of it. I think the city right now is in a, a perfect time to leverage the skills and the expertise of Experience Scottsdale to help market the downtown. The downtown of Scottsdale is truly the heart of Scottsdale. It's a retail heart, it's an entertainment heart, it's an arts heart. And I would like to be able to see their expertise, which has already been, you know, stated, is second to none in the country. I mean, I really do believe that, too. I think we're in a, in a situation where the downtown Scottsdale should be marketed as a destination for the down, for the out-of-state visitors. I think that Experience Scottsdale can do that probably better than anybody else that, that is around. I've thought about this quite a bit. You know, there is no backup for, for Experience Scottsdale. You guys have no Plan B. I want to be a cheerleader for Plan A, because I think it's a darn good Plan A. But I'd like to take their foremost marketing skills, and they're very capable as a marketing group, and they have the expertise needed to do a first-class job of marketing the downtown. For years, there's been a lot of misinformation and disinformation about the downtown. I think they literally would be the best entity to be able to change some of that misinformation and educate the concierge, the hoteliers, and get a conversation going with, with all of those people about what's going on in the downtown. What's the heart? I mean, we really are the heart that started Scottsdale, the downtown. And everything has grown out around it, and cities all over the country are paying a lot of attention to the downtown. I've been having more conversations with people that don't even work in the downtown that are concerned about the downtown. So right now, we have a really great opportunity to leverage the skills of Experience Scottsdale in marketing Scottsdale's heart, the downtown as a destination of visitors. So and after many conversations with Experience Scottsdale, I believe they're willing and have the desire to do this marketing, and just need some direction from the City Council to achieve these goals of increasing traffic and accurate knowledge of the downtown. I believe in Experience Scottsdale. I believe in the staff. I think that they would be the best people that we have in this city to market the downtown. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Next, Mr. Mark Stewart, followed by Mr. Mark Heagle.
I'm gonna ask you to vote no on this contract for a simple reason. This is a classic case of procurement fraud. Procurement fraud is when public officials pay more than the fair market prices for goods and services. That comes from the Arizona Auditor General. I want you to have them answer the following questions, if they have the courage, which I think we all know they can't. What are the well-defined goods and services that they're providing? What are the fair market prices of these goods and services? What are the maximum prices that Experience Scottsdale can pay for these goods and services? We pay more every year, but the market prices for goods and services like media are falling dramatically. In the last ten years, they've fallen over fifty percent. In the last five years, our expenditures for some undefined basket of goods and services has doubled. That's typically how you spot fraud. How does our basket of goods and services compare to the state Office of Tourism's basket of goods and services? In their contract, they have a specifically defined list of all the things that they do, and they have maximum prices that you can pay for it. I didn't see anything in their contract like that, and I know they don't have it, and here's how I know. I sent some public records requests in, and they told me, well, we're not gonna tell you, because it's proprietary, but we're not subject to the public records laws. Now, we all know that's wrong, because they're entirely supported with public money, and our city charter requires that any agent of the city provide all their records and make them open to the public. They refuse to do it. That's a classic sign of fraud. In fact, Mr. Smith pointed that out with the Phil Mickelson deal. That's how I spotted the TPC deal. And if you come to the trial on October eighteenth, we're gonna show how you go through a contract and properly benchmark and define the goods and services. You can do that with any contract. Revenues increase for this tax because hotel rates are going up. Hotel rates are significantly positively correlated to disposable income, which goes up when the economy does well. Doesn't have anything to do with Experience Scottsdale. Tourism's flat here, when adjusted for inflation. In fact, it's down. That's not a sign of somebody who's competent, that's a sign of someone who's incompetent. But the real killer is that we're paying more for the incompetence. What about duplication of services? What do the hotels do? What do they do that the hotels don't do? Aren't we just giving gratuitous contracts and gratuitous, paying for gratuitous services for friends of the City Council and friends of the CVB? It appears that way. And let me wrap it up with this. Prop Two Hundred will fall to a legal challenge, because the goods and services aren't defined. There's no requirement that you cannot pay more than the fair market prices, so it'll automatically fall to a gift clause challenge. It also violates our city charter anti-subsidy clause. So I urge you all, come down to the trial on the eighteenth. We're gonna have
Thank you, Mr.
The city auditor,
Time's expired.
Mr. Smith and Mr., and Mr. Lang, we're gonna ask them about
Thank you, Mr.
how you've determined the fair market prices of goods and services. Vote no on this, protect your own wallets.
Stewart, your time's expired.
Thank you, Mr. Lang.
Thank you. Mr. Mark Heagle.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council members. I'm Mark Heagle, president and CEO of the Scottsdale Area Chamber of Commerce, and I represent over eleven hundred businesses here in Scottsdale. I work at Scottsdale and McCormick Parkway, and I live at Scottsdale and Lincoln Road. I'm here to speak on behalf of and in support of Experience Scottsdale. In my role as the head of the chamber and as a citizen of Scottsdale, it is my honor to partner with numerous different groups here in Scottsdale. These are groups such as the City and Staff, more specifically, the Economic Development Department, Danielle, who spoke previously, and her staff, Scottsdale Leadership, Go Class Thirty-One, I just graduated, Scottsdale Charles, the City, and Spring Training, and just as, if not more importantly, Experience Scottsdale. So I just have one message. In my previous life, I've served on the board of the Phoenix Convention and Visitors Bureau. I worked with the Las Vegas Convention and Visitors Authority, and L, more commonly known as LVCVA. Their budget, when I left there, was approximately sixty-four million dollars a year, and that was eight or nine years ago. And I have never seen such as high a return on dollars as I have here in Scottsdale. And I have experience, I can talk about it, I've been in the business for thirty years. So I look at that return that we get in hot, in Scottsdale. And Las Vegas Convention and Visitors Bureau was really good, but they're better here, and we need to continue to work with this team. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Heagle. And that completes the public testimony on item sixteen. And we can start with comments and questions, and starting with Councilwoman Millhaven.
Thank you, Mayor. And to the ladies and gentlemen of Experience Scottsdale, I say, thank you. I appreciate you. You're amazing. And I, you know, great organizations strive for continuous improvement, and I think that's what we see here with this contract renewal, that we've taken a great vendor and a great program, tweaked the contract based on some feedback to make it even better. And, and so I applaud all of the changes that we're making here. I'm also pleased to see the mention of supporting downtown Scottsdale. I think that the Experience Scottsdale's already demonstrated their commitment to downtown Scottsdale. I've attended many of the Tourism Master Plan meetings, and, and a lot of the efforts around the Tourism Master Plan Task Force was around, how do we, what can we do to bring more people downtown, and how can we make downtown a more attractive place? And I see marketing downtown as a natural extension from that. And so I've already seen Experience Scottsdale's commitment to downtown. I'm glad to see that there's language in the contract that reinforces that. And, and while some folks said they'd like to see more concrete language, I didn't hear any suggestions of more concrete language, but I think the intention to say, we all prosper when downtown prospers, is true and is exemplified in this contract. So to that end, I would like to make the motion to adopt resolution one oh eight nine five, authorizing the agreement two oh one seven oh seven nine, city of Scottsdale, with Scottsdale Convention and Visitors Bureau doing business as Experience Scottsdale.
Second.
Motion's made by Councilwoman Millhaven, and seconded by Councilwoman Cordy. Would you like to speak toward it?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. And echoing Councilwoman Millhaven's comments, thank you, Experience Scottsdale. You bring talent, you bring integrity, and you bring passion to our fine city. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Just continuing some conversation, we do, and questions or comments, Councilwoman Littlefield.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to say congratulations, and I would like to say thank you for all the hard work that you do for Scottsdale. I'd also like to say thank you to our city manager, Jim Thompson, for taking a contract, making it better, and tweaking it to something that will be, I believe, very beneficial to Scottsdale and all of its businesses and residents. So thank you, Jim. I like the changes that have been made in the Experience Scottsdale contract. I believe the ongoing monitor of this contract can help solve any problems early on, and I like the greater transparency that we're going to have on the costs and the activities that you provide us. I'm also happy to see the additional marketing focus on promoting Scottsdale-owned venues of Westworld and the Scottsdale Sports Complex. And of course, I like the increased focus and better marketing of our downtown. And of course, I like the increased focus and better marketing of our downtown. A lot has been said about it tonight. I'm going to say some more, because I think it's extremely important. It needs some special and concentrated TLC. We give Experienced Scottsdale 50 percent of our tourism market for destin-- or money for destination marketing, and that's estimated to be about $9.7 million, plus or minus a few hundred thousand in tax dollars. These are areas, these three areas that I mentioned, are the targeted areas of this new contract and are of concern to the city. All of them are important. All of them are very complex. Scottsdale doesn't do simple. I'm focusing today on the downtown area. It includes many varieties of commercial businesses, including an abundance of fine restaurants, high-quality commercial shops, the historic and world-renowned art galleries, and the relatively new but dynamic Museum of the West. Each of these areas in our downtown needs to be recognized and needs to be a go-to downtown place. I do not believe that that is currently happening, and I'm going to tell you why. A number of people here in the city have told me they don't understand what the people in the downtown want. They get conflicting issues, conflicting ideas. Nothing is the same from one person to the next. And so, I said, "Okay, I'm going to call around. I'm going to find out for myself." I've spoken to many in this area over the last few weeks, and I'm finding at least one very, very large problem that was of overall concern to just about everybody. There is a huge disconnect, so big that I believe it has almost come to the point of distrust between the downtown merchants and the city, which includes Experienced Scottsdale. Let me tell you just a few of the comments that I heard, and they are from a number of people that said pretty much the same thing. If I need to separate my papers here. "We are considered the stepchild for Scottsdale's staff. They decide what they want to do, and then they tell us what they are going to do. We are not consulted until after the decisions are made. We need to be advertised at least on an equal footing with others, like the celebration of fine arts. We need to be at the table earlier in the process before decisions are made. Our input is not considered." These are separate quotes from a lot of different people. So, I asked them, "Well, what do you see as the biggest need and concern that is not being addressed in the downtown area?" And their answer to this was very straightforward and fairly unanimous. These followings are pretty close to direct quotes. "Many of our customers are from out of town. Often, they come in to shop, and they say things like, 'We are so happy to have found you. No one told us about this part of Scottsdale.' We need to work on how to link to the conferences, both online and at the hotels and their meetings. We need to be able to link with the meeting organizers and the conference planners to include the downtown as a destination to discover and find out what made our city's downtown famous in the first place. Maybe we need an Experienced Scottsdale Special Group marketing team to focus and market on downtown, so we have more exposure to the visitors when they come here." I think that was a little ironic. "Our hotel visitors don't hear about us." Those are the quotes, and those were pretty much all what they said. So, I support Experienced Scottsdale, and I certainly plan on approving this contract tonight. I think they do a wonderful job. That doesn't mean that there can't be better things done in the next five years. My question, what are your thoughts about marketing this very unique part of Scottsdale? How do you tie it all together as a unique shopping, visiting experience, from the hotels to the museum, to the galleries, to the dinner, to the art walk, and then back again to the hotels? As I said, we don't do simple in Scottsdale, but I'd like to hear your thoughts on how you plan to market this very vital and very unique area of our city. Karen, could you answer that?
Mayor, Councilmembers, Councilman Littlefield, we are in constant meetings with, not constant, but very regular meetings with Experienced Scottsdale and their staff, and we've talked a lot about a lot of different ways to further promote downtown Scottsdale in particular. I want to make it very clear that downtown, that Experienced Scottsdale has always marketed downtown Scottsdale in many ways, from the meeting planners, to the travel professionals, to the media, the familiarization tours, obviously, the marketing, the advertising. It pretty much goes on and on. So, our goal is to, how do we even do it more? And one of the, just one example of hopefully many to come, is thanks to the council, recently you approved funding for the Canal Convergence event, and we're moving that event, we'll have that event in March, in February, March of 2018, and then we'll be moving that event to a 10-day destination event in November of 2018. So, we're already collaborating and talking about how we can leverage their expertise in providing, getting the media familiarization tours here during the Canal Convergence, getting some of the travel bloggers and influencers that are all important these days, and how we can get them here in February, March, so that they'll start promoting and talking about that amazing event, so people will come to our destination and to downtown specifically in November of 2018. So, that's one example.
Thank you. I'd be very interested to be kept abreast of the others. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Number one, I want to thank everybody who's been involved with this process with the recognition of what the city's responsibility is with the major, the largest operating contractor we use here in the city, and that's being Experienced Scottsdale. It's extremely important that we have, and I want to thank our city auditor, I want to thank our city treasurer, and I want to thank our city manager and anyone, and certainly Experienced Scottsdale's, their staff, Rachel, yourself, and your board, for working together and understanding that there are certain things that have to take place, and there are certain, sometimes it's not all honey and milk and honey kind of thing, but nevertheless, it's a good place. And where we're at, I think, is a lot of good things have been incorporated in this. There's been a little bit of tumble on it. I think one of the things that's interesting to me and is, I think, important for our downtown, as we looked at some of the numbers, it actually just translated into exactly the situation that we saw developing here two and a half years ago. Downtown was on the same rise up out of the Great Recession as every other part of the city, until we made some dramatic changes. We started to talk it down, and it became a problem area. People started to recognize it as an area in turmoil, and I think it drove some people away. Some people just didn't come because the rules had changed. That's the reason that I see for it. Otherwise, it would have followed the same trend line as the rest of the city, as far as I'm concerned. And it was on the upturn for a great number of years. But notwithstanding that, that's something that's in place now. But I do believe that's part of what we're talking about here. What can and what will our contract with Experienced Scottsdale contribute now to specific city assets and venues? And one of them is downtown Scottsdale. We've got it specifically laid out. I think that's important. To Mr. Pejman's concern about it not being quantifiable, I certainly do understand that, but there is something about it when you have a professional organization that you've, we've invested in a tremendous amount of the city's resources to do exactly what you do, and making sure that we have the coverage, we do have the return on city assets, that's those tax funds, to, that are recovered here, to city properties and downtown, and to those venues that we talked about. I would only say that it's implied that we're going to be looking to see specifically how that translates as far as the support for downtown, the support for Westworld, support for the museum. How do we, how does that translate, and how can we demonstrate that when the time comes around and make the judgment on that? But other than that, I think, and I don't think that that's outside the realm of what will and can be done, and I think it'll be positive for us all to be looking at that, and hopefully, positive for downtown. There hasn't been a period of time that I've been here, and it's been quite a while, that we've spent as much money on downtown as we have in the last year and a half. It's incredible, the amount of money that we've thrown into this and studies and actions and opportunities and that, and it's obviously having exactly the opposite effect. It's rolling down the other direction, as was pointed out by Mr. Pejman's graph. So, we've got to think of a better way to do it and make sure we're talking up downtown. It's a great place, and frankly, has done some great things over the years. So, I'm looking forward to this. And again, I want to congratulate everybody for their part in putting this together, and with the recognition that it's an important component for the city and for the taxpayers and for our business, our major industry, which is tourism. So, I, with that, I just would want to say thank you to everybody, and we want to move forward positively, and I'm hoping for a 7-0. So, thank you very much. Councilman Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I'll echo what everybody else has said. Thank you to everyone involved in this contract. I made a comment to somebody that this contract probably should not be on consent. It is the, one of the largest contracts that we have with a partner, and I think the public deserves to know how and why we've made this award again to Experienced Scottsdale, not the CBB. Experienced Scottsdale, Jack. Besides which, I think you all would have missed a real love fest had you not had this on regular agenda, all the complimentary comments, because I think you've, it's a great history since 1977 or whatever. It's a great history of growing together and promoting our mutual interests. I think the things that you heard tonight, take to heart. There is a great concern about the downtown area, and whether it's a concern about the declining sales or a concern about the lack of promotion, whatever. I don't happen to agree that we've thrown untold money into downtown. I don't think studies do anything to promote business downtown, and I also don't think what's happening downtown is the result of taking the white tents off the canal. I think the downtown is a unique asset to the city, and I think it's, it is a tourist destination. I think we all agree with that. And it's that which we, you're hearing this, council, and many of the speakers say they want to hear, or they want evidence of a promotional program to acquaint people, not with the Canal Convergence, not with the Christmas tree or whatever, but acquaint them with the totality of a downtown Scottsdale, the unique experience that one has in walking the downtown area. I too would love to see stronger words. I would like to see something other than whatever the slide said, assist the city in promoting downtown. I don't know whether you can come up with some metrics, working with city staff, whether you can come up with a way of measuring the effort that you're putting in, but I would certainly encourage you to do that, because we are going to be looking for evidence that this part of the tourism destination advertising marketing program is a reality. And you're hearing some of the people say too, some of the speakers talking about memberships and how the memberships in this Experienced Scottsdale seem to drive the efforts of Experienced Scottsdale. Whether that's true or not, you know, none of us up here are skilled enough to figure out what you're doing with the money. That's why we've hired you. But certainly, we want to be sure that the tourist destinations of Scottsdale get an A1 top priority for our $10 million, over and above what any other member might get by paying a membership of $1,000 or whatever. So, be sensitive to that message. I'll echo what many people have said here. We look forward to working together for another five years. We look forward to another five successive years of growth and prosperity for the city. And I think we have made improvements to the contract, and we'll always work to make improvements. But thank you all for your efforts. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman Phillips.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm usually the first to speak, so it's kind of strange to be the last. On Mr. Miller, that was a great speech you gave. I was going to clap, and I thought the mayor would shut me down, so I didn't. But, you know, I've known Rachel for, what, five years now, maybe six years? I haven't been here as long as most other people. But every time I talk to her, the one thing that always sticks in my mind, and it always seems to be a different number, but I just heard 67 to 1. What kind of stock is going to give you 67 to 1? Because I'll buy 1,000 shares of that. So, you know, to me, how can you go wrong with that? How can you go wrong with saying, "If I give you a dollar, you'll give me 67 in return"? Everybody's going to do it. And for Mr. Miller, all the CVBs you've been on over the years are known, and to be able to say this is one of the best in the country, that's an amazing statement. And so, maybe Scottsdale's lucky to have you. And there's been a lot of talk about, well, you know, what are they doing here? What are they doing there? Why aren't they promoting the downtown enough? You know, these are questions that, I never really occurred to me. I didn't think about, yeah, we're not really promoting downtown enough. But then, when you start thinking about it, you have to realize, is CVBs should be promoting more of the downtown? How much of their share of their money should be to the downtown? Should be to Westworld? Should be to the Princess? Should be to Sanctuary or whatever? How much should, the TDC should be doing that? How much should the business owners and the downtown property owners themselves be doing something? I think the mayor hit on something, a major point, and that is, we need to speak good about downtown, because I agree with that. There was a lot of talk, oh, this and this about downtown, blah, blah, blah. That does nobody any good. You know, we need to talk good about it. We need to create a buzz for downtown. And I do agree that I'd like to see more defined objectives in your contract. That didn't happen, but I appreciate the fact that our city manager gave you that extension, and we worked on it more and worked out some other bugs in the contract, and that was a good thing. Councilman Smith, correct that shouldn't have been on the consent agenda if for no other reason, to provide some accolades for you, because this is a major contract for us, and it should be spoken in public, and the public should know we have your confidence in you for this. So, I want to help the business owners downtown, and I want to see them prosper. And I think there's other things that we're going to do in the future that's going to really help that. But I think for right now, I think we've done the best we can with this marketing agreement. It's a five-year agreement, you know, where everybody's going to be watching it closely, see what's going on. Hopefully, Experienced Scottsdale, it is hard to remember that, and the TDC will work closely hand-in-hand and see more things that we can do to promote the downtown. But again, it really has to be in conjunction with the downtown property owners, because they have to do their share too, and it should be a mutual contract between them, I think. So, I'm happy that this contract is finally done, and it sounds like everybody's on board, and good luck in the next five years.
Thank you, Councilman. Vice Mayor Clapp.
You weren't the last to speak. I am. And I just want to thank you as well. The Experienced Scottsdale is a very professional organization, and the work you do is well-recognized by people within the city and outside of the city. I think that French Thompson probably said many of the things that I was thinking, that, you know, he's a retailer downtown, and he loves the organization and wants to help in any way to make it better, and wants to find ways to work within the organization to make the downtown better, as well as our other city-owned facilities. And I don't want to sit here and tell you how to do that. The language says you're going to assist in helping promote the downtown and other city facilities, or city facilities, and that's fine with me. About all I will ask is, when you come back and make reports to the city, that you find a way to explain to us what you're doing to help promote the downtown, Westworld, and the other facilities, so that we can see that there is some progress being made. It's up to you to determine what you need to do and then report back to us. If that can be quantified in some way, that's fine, but if it can't, at least verbally try to give us a sense of what you're doing is making a difference in the downtown, for Westworld, for the museum, for the Giant Stadium, and all the things that are owned in the city. And I know that you're going to work closely with Karen Churchard's group to do this, and I don't want to leave her out, because I know that she's got a lot of specific plans for helping to promote downtown as well. So, all I can do is encourage you to work together and tell us the things-- So all I can do is encourage you to work together and tell us the things that you're doing that will help improve the area, because it's the heart of the city. We're concerned about it having declined. I don't agree also with some of the reasons that have been stated about why it's declined, but it has. And so we need to, and I think it's because we're not promoting enough. I really believe that's probably the major reason. Marketing and promotion is what makes a difference many times to keep growing an area or a business or whatever it is. So thank you. I think you're going to have your 7-0 vote, and we appreciate that you'll be coming back to us and giving us reports from time to time. Look forward to hearing about all the progress you're going to make over the coming year and actually, the next five years. Thank you.
Thank you. You know, one other final thing I'd have to say, even though it's been said differently by some others, there isn't any doubt, and I think anyone's mind here in Scottsdale, that it's not all an accident, but it is most assuredly a joint effort. But there isn't any doubt about it that the efforts by Experience Scottsdale is a major component in what Scottsdale and how it is presented to the world. There's no doubt. And so irrespective of the marginalization of the statements that have been, it's not held by anybody, I believe, on this council at all, and we recognize that. And in much the same way as we want to be always thinking good, not in a delusional state or anything as far as things are in downtown, but certainly realistically, but being positive about things and what we do, we certainly want that same feeling with Experience Scottsdale. So we're glad to have this opportunity to speak about it in this way. So with that, I think we're then ready then to vote. All those in favor, please indicate by aye and register your vote, aye. And it is unanimous, 7-0, just exactly what we were looking for. So thank you very much. Have a great year going forward, and it's good to have you here.